Good evening. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for October 19th, 2020. Call upon Councilmember Lauren Simpson.
Please join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now if you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristen Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Very good. Next, we have the approval of the minutes of October 5th, 2020. Any changes or corrections? No one has indicated any changes, therefore they will stand approved as presented. Next, under Recognitions and Communications, we have a presentation by the Elks Club. Rick Osmus.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Rick Osmus, a longtime city employee and a proud member of the Arvada Elks Lodge 2278. I'm here tonight with the exalted ruler Gene Schluter and other members of our large Lodge Board of Directors. We are here tonight to present a check to the Community Table. The Elks National Foundation is able to help the Elks build a stronger community thanks to the contributions from generous donors. The Elks National Foundation has more than 100,000 active donors and an endowment fund valued over $692 million that they put back into the communities across the U.S. The Arvada Elks Lodge was awarded a $2,000 Spotlight Grant. In normal situations, we'd be more active in fundraising with this money and adding to it, but the Elks Foundation asks that we just award the money directly to an organization that helps people in our community, and of course, that's the Community Table. I know that our lodge holds pancake breakfast to raise money for the Community Table, but the last six months with COVID, we have been unable to do that. So we thought it was most fitting to award this check tonight to the Community Table. So unfortunately Sandy Martin, CEO of the Community Table, could not be here tonight, but I do have Harry Fuller, Chair of the Board. I would also ask David Jones, our Councilmember and representative to the Community Table, to please come down, and Gene Schluter to award them the check. We're going to try to do this as social distance as possible. I'm going to take a quick snapshot as well, if I may.
You may. If you guys stand at arms length with that large check, you'll probably be more than six feet apart.
I was smiling, I promise.
Very good. Thank you, Elks, very much. This check will pay for approximately 667 meals at the Community Table. In the last 10 years, the Elks have given us nearly $19,000 worth of cash donations, which account for approximately 6,000 overall sales. So as the Board Chair, I would like to thank the City Council for their 38 years' worth of support. I would like to thank the Elks for their 152 years of doing good in this country. Thank you very much.
Yeah, the Elks has been a great organization and a community, and I understand that they're almost completed with their renovation project, and we're looking forward to seeing how it looks. And once we can start doing events again, it's going to be a great event center as well. So, thank you very much. We now go to public comment on issues not scheduled on the agenda. We have a three-minute limit for these discussions. The first one for a public comment is John Assen. Assen, sorry. Sorry, Mr. Assen.
All right. Very common. I appreciate you letting me speak tonight. I'm talking on behalf of some of the individuals who are along the 72nd Avenue road widening. And I wanted to add some thoughts of my own. Having been in, I've done condemnation work as a profession for a number of years. I have a professional appraisal designation. I've been doing this for 35 years. And basically, from what I can tell in talking to various city officials, basic information seems to be unavailable to us. We have asked for the original drawings of the road widening that were used for the budgets and cost estimates for the number, the dollar figure that went on the ballot, and also the cost estimates themselves in a detailed manner. There is an issue that sound walls were to be included, but now there is debate about that because now they're not included. And one of the problems is with the sound study is, in my opinion, from everything I could see, that traffic west of Sim Street, there's been no traffic study. But yet, the master plan has always shown, I'm going to put that down, four lanes going from Indiana all the way to Sheridan, and we're one section. So just measuring our section without considering everything else that's going to four lanes is very short-sighted and limited. And I think that that is something that has not been brought forward in the study that we continually heard about. The study was also done, as I just found out tonight, after the bond issue passed, which is a problem because nobody knew exactly what was going to happen, and we were told one thing, and so there's some confusion there. So we think the sound study is in question, given that the city had already planned for the length of 72nd to be widened before the ballot initiative went up for vote. So you have to consider the whole thing. The other issue is you have a situation where the engineers used a certain sound measurement and an exponential factor to increase traffic to come up with a decibel level. Fine. The problem is you're widening the road, and if you have, you're anticipating more traffic. So if you're going to have, say, 25% more traffic in the near future, then you have to count 25% more noise.
Okay, sir, your three minutes are up. If you could wrap up, please.
Yeah, at 25 minutes, or 25% more noise, but that's not reflected in the study. So those are my main issues.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Next, we have Mary Sullivan. And are we not able to show the timer? Okay.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
I'm Mary Sullivan, and I'm just kind of to follow up on some of the things that John had spoke about as well. So I'd like to represent our neighborhood group concerning the 72nd Expansion Project, Kipling to Sims. So I wanted to share with you some of our concerns around the lack of a noise abatement barrier wall. One is the blocking of sound. So our group has some concerns around the sound report that was conducted, which you just heard some information on, and an increase in the noise due to additional building that is also happening on 72nd in the same area from Kipling to Sims. The second is safety concerns for all residents, and especially those who have homes closer to the road. With more traffic brings more possibilities for accidents and limited safety to our homes and the families in them. Our group, along with you, knows the importance of our Arvada lifestyle. We look forward to creating a working relationship with you in an effort to have this project reflect the rich family values that make up Arvada. I'd like, I know you guys, I believe, have a copy of the letter that we submitted.
We do.
I would like to actually read the letter, just for the community as a whole and anybody that maybe is joining us that doesn't have a copy of it. "The members of the Arvada 72nd Homeowners Losing Land Group are writing to petition the Arvada City Council to conduct noise abatement barriers for the West 72nd Arvada Bond Project, consistent with previous barriers along the West 72nd Corridor. To begin, we would like to thank Councilwoman Nancy Ford for taking the time to meet with us on Sunday, October 11th, 2020. She was extremely helpful in discussing the project and explaining the proper way to bring her concerns and recommendations forward. In the November 6, 2018 election, Arvada residents approved ballot issue 3F for a bond issue to fund improvements to Ralston Road and West 72nd Avenue. We believe that the passage of the issue was influenced by the perception that there would be sound barriers matching the walls along 72nd Avenue, .8 miles to the east, or the walls along Kipling Avenue from 73rd Place to 80th Ave. These walls are not only effective sound barriers, but offer a higher degree of safety, especially in the areas where residents are already close to the road. Areas on the north side of 72nd also need to be considered. The current plan has inconsistencies and must be addressed. Providing anything less will make future bond issues more difficult. We are asking Council to assure that the barriers to be constructed meet these standards. The current recommendation of six-foot of layer, of single-layer cedar fencing is unacceptable. We believe the sound report is flawed for several reasons, including placement of meters, assumptions regarding timing of the study, new housing projects, and therefore the conclusions. We would recommend a new study done in consultation with this group as to planning and execution." The concerns regarding safety. Is that my time?
Yeah, that's your time.
Okay. Well, you have the rest of the letter.
Yes, we do.
But thank you. I appreciate your time tonight.
You bet. And we do have the signatures of the people who have signed the petition. What I'm going to do is ask our city manager to get us more information on this, get back to your group with regard to options and considerations that we can make on this, okay? Thank you so much. And I'm sorry, our timer was not working properly. Next, we, anybody else? Do we have anybody else for public comment?
Yes, Mayor, we have Gabrielle Zimmerman on Zoom.
Okay.
Gabrielle, you could unmute.
Ms. Zimmerman?
Can I?
We certainly can.
Okay. My video is not working right now, but I did want to bring up, I have a part of that 72nd Homeowners That Are Losing Land Group. My property is right at the corner of Quail and 72nd, and we have quite a large stretch of frontage road along 72nd Avenue. We have quite a few concerns about not receiving the sound barrier wall as, you know, we were originally told we would receive that would match the brick and cement sound barrier wall along the 72nd Ave corridor. Now that we'll be losing more land, the street and roadway will be much closer to our house, to our bedroom, to our garage. We have small animals, and I want to make sure that we're actually being heard, and we have some more input on this project before final decisions are made on this fence and barrier.
Okay, Ms. Zimmerman, thank you. Can you give us your address so that we've got it for the record, and so?
Sure. It's 11-200 West 72nd Avenue.
Thank you so much. Do we have anyone else signed up for public comment?
No one else.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to new business. We have a few items on our consent agenda. First is a resolution adopting the amended administrative fee schedule for building safety division permits and services pursuant to Chapter 18 of our Buildings and Building Regulations of the Arvada City Code. Next one is a resolution adopting the amended permits fee schedule for rights-of-way work permits and services pursuant to Chapter 78 of the Public Improvements of the Arvada City Code. Next is a resolution approving and content the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority budget for fiscal year 2021. Next is a resolution authorizing an amendment to an existing agreement between Arvada and Dewberry Engineers for professional services relating to civil engineering design of Ralston Water Treatment, Water Plant Pump Station Project in an amount not to exceed approximately $77,000. Next is a resolution authorizing an amendment to an existing agreement between Arvada and Stan T. Consulting Services in the amount of approximately $197,000 for the Ralston Raw Water Pump Station and Pipeline Project. Final consent agenda item is a resolution authorizing a change order to the agreement between Arvada and TerraCon Consultants in an amount not to exceed $275,000 for professional testing services. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I'll make a motion here on the consent agenda. I do want to bring up one, maybe mistyping in our packet under item number five on the consent agenda, that the amount there is actually $197,240. There's an extra point, dot, and two zero.
Oh, a couple of extra zeros.
Couple of extra zeros in there, so.
Zero, zero, point, zero, zero.
Make sure, we'll make sure that we note that that's $197,240. So I will move that items R20-087 through R20-092 all be approved.
motions for approval. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. That extra point zero zero is because Brian Archer watches every partial penny on behalf of the City of Arvada. So with that, that does pass unanimously. We'll move on to resolutions. We have a resolution authorizing a grant award letter, intergovernmental grant agreement, DCJ Grant Number 2020, VD 20-01-25, by and between the City of Arvada and the State of Colorado. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this resolution will enable the Police Department to receive emergency funds released by a state review panel. It's called the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Fund, and its purpose is to support state and local governments and agencies with the broad range of criminal justice and law enforcement activities. With this, your approval of this recommend, of this resolution, which we recommend, will enable us to receive a little over $20,000 in state grant funding that we could use to help procure essential items and any other law enforcement-related activities associated with the ongoing pandemic. So we recommend that you would approve this resolution so we could receive the funds.
Open it up for City Council questions or action. Ms. Ford.
I'll make a motion if there's no questions.
You may proceed.
I move that R20-093, a resolution authorizing a grant award letter, intergovernmental grant agreement, DCJ Grant Number 2020-VD-20-01-25, by and between the City of Arvada and the State of Colorado, be approved.
motions for approval. Votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. I appreciate you all voting for this. It's kind of funny. I got the grant letter for signature from the State of Colorado before it came to us, and of course, I immediately contacted our city attorney, Rachel Morris, and said, "I don't think I should sign this yet," right? She goes, "No, please don't until we actually take action on it." So, so I think we've straightened that out so that the state quits sending me things to sign before City Council takes action.
We have.
Yes, thank you. Next, first readings. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 20-029, An Ordinance Amending Various Sections of Chapter 102, Utilities of the Arvada City Code Pertaining to Water User Rates, and Council Bill 20-030, An Ordinance Amending Section 102-206 of Chapter 102, Utilities of the Arvada City Code Pertaining to Wastewater User Rates, be approved on first reading. Order published in full and public hearing be set for November 2nd, 2020, at 6:15 p.m.
motions for approval. All votes are cast on first reading. Those pass seven to zero. Thank you. With that, we are ready to move into public hearings. I'll open the public hearings.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I apologize. We did want to present the water rates information, which are associated with the first, with the actions on first reading you just approved. We're ready to do that now. We thought that, given the questions that came up at the council workshop last Monday, it would be appropriate action to take so that you can also consider this as you consider the actions that are coming up on the budget. Is that acceptable to council?
You bet. I think you must have updated the agenda with everyone but the paper copies.
That is, I'm sure that's true. Yeah.
Fair enough.
Yeah. So with that, we have Director of Utilities Sharon Israel, who will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for having me back this evening to talk to you about water and sewer rates. I believe there's some slides. Okay, there we go. Let's see. I don't think that's the first slide, though. How can I present to you without slides? You should have seen these presented to you, I think, as part of a packet amendment ahead of time, but I'm going to give Bruce a minute to get going on that. Thank you, Bruce. All right, here we go. I believe this format for our presentation should look familiar to you. It's the same format I presented to you last year, and it's one that I borrowed from Jim Sullivan for the many years he made the same presentation to you. So the purpose of going through this is to illustrate our recommendation for both water and sewer rate increases, and then also share with you a comparison with other neighboring cities, and then also what these increases would do in terms of impact to our future fund balances. So I will go ahead and get started on it. Please don't hesitate to ask questions as I go along, if you like, or I'll.
I think you've noticed this council's not shy.
And I appreciate that because I am very passionate about sustainable infrastructure, and so I really enjoy the engagement with council on this type of thing. So thank you. As you know, I'm proposing, we're proposing a 4% water rate increase this coming year and a 3% wastewater rate increase. That amounts to $1.27 per month of water rate increase for an average single-family home, and about $0.60 a month additional for wastewater, so total of $1.87 per month. I want to talk to you about the bar chart that you see there at the bottom. That's a combination of estimated water, sewer, and stormwater charges for a single-family home. For Arvada in 2020, Arvada in 2021 should sound, council see fit to adopt the rates, and then where we would compare to the other neighboring cities based on their 2020 rates. So those are their currently published rates. So you can see here that in 2020, an average single-family home has a charge of about $743 a year, and we're looking to increase that by about $22 for the course of the year to $765 for the course of the year. Again, that's a combination of all their water, sewer, and stormwater fees. Let me just mention, we're not proposing an increase to stormwater rates this year. So this is just focused on water and wastewater. You can see, based on comparisons with Denver, Golden, Littleton, Aurora, the Lakewood number there is a consolidated mutual water district comparison, Boulder, and then also Westminster. So let's go to the next slide, please. Okay. So this is where that 4% would go. A portion of it is salary and benefit changes, and as you know, we're not proposing any increases to salary based on salary comparisons or step increases, but we do have a model where we promote our internal folks who pass exams. So if they have an exam for, let's see, they're at a Level 1 for distribution, system operator for the water system, if they achieve a Level 2, 3, 4, they're allowed to self-promote through our job progression model, and that's really a wonderful thing for both our team members and also the city. So we set aside some money for that. As I discussed with council at the workshop last week, we had $448,000 set aside for an anticipated Denver water rate increase, and the proposal here is to, because Denver Water has not raised our rates for 2021, to reallocate those funds into some unfunded capital accounts. About $180,000 is for additional city support services, things like cost increases associated with regulatory compliance, overall general vendor price increases. We pay for chemicals, we pay for electricity, we budget for general price increases there. And then we have one new position that we're including in the budget this year, and that's for a SCADA technician. So that's for a technical expert who can help us both maintain and then rebuild some of our SCADA control system. So SCADA controls are the instruments and control systems that allow us to remotely control all of the facilities around the city, things like pump stations, storage tanks, and then also remotely control aspects of our water treatment.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you. So I have a question about, you know, originally, our first look at it was, we thought that Denver Water was going to increase the price of our raw water by $448,000. As it turns out, that's not going to happen, and so you would understand why that would be on this budget sheet. And so using that money for other purposes, like capital improvement projects is fine. Are these projects that are already identified or in the works or prepared to be done, you know, I'm sure a lot of these take quite a bit of lead-in to do, or would this money be set aside for yet-to-be-determined or unspecified kind of capital improvement needs?
We have a number of projects in the wings that we're ready to execute, and that, based on my opinion and also our city engineer and others, believe it's important for us to move forward with. So we've got some projects right away that we would be able to fund with these dollars. You may recall that one of our strategic results for our strategic plan in the city is to complete master plans for our infrastructure projects. So that includes what, master plans for water, wastewater, and stormwater. In this past year, we finished our master planning for water, and that's given us a real to-do list as far as capital projects. So what that'll do is allow us to, if we're, if we move forward with master plan recommendations, we'll be in a good place to both serve the growth that's contemplated for the city per the comprehensive plan, and we'll be in a good position as far as reinvestment of our infrastructure. So a couple of projects that we've already discussed internally that we could reallocate these funds for are things like our fluoride replacement system. We also have a clarifier tank at our Arvada Water Treatment Plant. It's a large steel tank, and it's used as part of the treatment process. We're having some structural problems with it right now, and so that needs some immediate attention. We also need to do some work to rebuild our filters based on just industry benchmarking. So all of those things are must-dos, and I will be returning in December, December 14th, to talk in more detail about those findings. But just right off the bat, I can assure you, there's, there are multiple needs for the funds identified here.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
Thank you so much. I've had a quick question on the new position.
Yes.
Is that, I'm assuming, these are things that we currently outsource, so hiring somebody to do it internally would be a savings long-term?
There is a savings in, but it's perhaps a little bit different than the outsourcing argument. It's partly because we have growth out in the northwest part of the city, so that just means that we've got more miles to travel. What's starting to happen, though, is that SCADA control system, and to your point about outsourcing, what's starting to happen is we're having trouble buying the parts and pieces to repair what we have. So we just, we need to do some technical upgrades, and hiring that in-house will allow us to do some of that.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Okay. So let me take some notes of what I also wanted to bring up. So how much, and I cannot remember your master plan of your, the water master plan. So how much, how many projects are in that, that plan of what we need to do? Like, how much dollar-wise is it?
So the immediate needs of our overall master plan, the immediate must-do, based on the the immediate must-do, based on the recommendations from our in-house folks as well as our third party, it's in the neighborhood of $8 million.
So there's $8 million worth of work.
And that's the immediate. There is, there's additional work beyond that that we'll be talking to you in December about. Part of the reason that this, this work is immediately needed is that there is a lead time to be able to start from where we are now to get to the point where we're actually building some of the infrastructure that we need to build. So things like site planning, engineering preliminary design, then getting to a final bid packet, all of those things we'll be proposing to work on over the next few years. But there's a couple that we really need to go forward with now.
So the $8 million, what is considered new capital versus asset management?
So we have, we have very thoughtfully examined the results of the master plan in the context of that. So to your point, the language that we're starting to use is around, what is going to be for growth and philosophically having that funded through TAP fees? And then how much of it is for reinvestment and philosophically paid for through rates and service charges? So for each of the projects, we have beyond that delineation. So we can then make sure that as we're moving forward, it's sort of fairly balanced between what's reinvestment work and then what's the growth-related. A very rough estimate, I would say, is 2/3 reinvestment, 1/3 growth.
Thanks for driving us there. So 1/3 to new investment, but that is going to be based off TAP fees, basically, right?
Yes.
And the other is just asset management. Okay? And then just some random questions. I mean, some of these are kind of small projects. I'm just surprised they didn't come up as one-time asks until now. Maybe that's a question for Mark. But some of these things should have come up as a one-time ask. If our water is so important, they should have been probably with some of the top priorities of our one-time asks then versus trying to raise a rate right now when we're just learning about these issues. We'll just say that for now. So maybe in the future, we use one-time funds and look at priorities like water as a priority when we need some of this. Because I believe some of the projects are not that much, right? Quarter million, maybe?
Yes.
And we've had millions of dollars of one-time funds. So we should be focusing on quarter-million-dollar funding to water instead of something else on those one-time funds.
Councilmember Pfeiffer, I think the best way for me to answer that is that the one-time funds that I believe you're referring to are primarily general funds, which we would not use for a water enterprise fund like this. So there may be other ways that we can look at funding within the water enterprise fund. But generally speaking, the one-time funds that we bring to you in March and April of each year and recommend some reallocation are, which mostly goes into general fund capital projects, are from the general fund. We wouldn't necessarily use those for the water enterprise fund.
But we could if we decided to.
So.
We, as council, could, right? If I want to put more money into the fund to take care of an asset that's deteriorating or is broken?
So we would have to look at that from a legal perspective, since we do have a separate enterprise fund for that, and we're using fees from our water system to fund those things. We'd have to look at the details and make sure we didn't have a taper issue with taking funds from the general fund.
All right. That's a good answer. Thank you. And then that leads me into some more, but that does lead me into, why aren't we using our reservation, our reserves? And why, you know, some of these could have been maybe addressed, just like streets, right? We do a little chip seal, we get a little bit more length of it. Could some of these projects been used if you approached us and said, hey, we need to lower, we need to use a reserve fund for these issues? I'm assuming we have the right to say, let's dip down into there, lower our reserve fund from 25 or whatever down.
Well, yeah. It's at 25%. It's a council policy, which the council could elect to revise that policy. What I would caution you about is that a reserve fund should be used for emergency purposes. So think of the 2013 flood. Think of the impacts that occurred to our infrastructure as a result of the 2013 flood. We had some impacts to our water fund and our treatment plant. Thank goodness, they were not severe, and we were able to deal with those without dipping into the reserves. But think of a 2013 flood that had, that would have been way worse than what we had in 2013. That's when you use the reserves. You use the reserves when there's been that type of an impact as opposed to a situation where you want to just pay for a few capital projects. The reserve fund would be better, once you use the reserve fund, let's say you decided to take it down from 25% to 17% or 20%, that's a one-time, one-time hit or a one-time benefit to the reserve fund, and you lose that forever unless you take the step to build it up again. You know, frankly, you know, the reserve balances that we've built into that council policy is something that we would, we would frankly never, never recommend as a city staff to utilize that fund. When we had a discussion about reserve funds a week ago, the mayor mentioned that one of the reasons why we keep a reserve balance as high as we do in all of our funds is because it gives us very good bond ratings. And when we, when you talk about our, our reserve funds and bond ratings, we were able to get significant savings on the financing that we did for our bond projects, the $80 million worth of financing that we did for the bond projects. And that takes into account all of our reserves, the reserves we hold for the general fund as well as the reserves that we hold for the enterprise funds. And when we did that financing, we saved a significant amount of money. Mr. Archer, do you recall what we saved?
Yeah, it was a little over $3.5 million. So.
So, but let me, let me ask you, on any of these items, these $8 million of items, 2/3 of them are for asset management. Of the $8 million, if anything stops working in our water system or wastewater, then what? Where is that money coming from, and what would we use to fix whatever that detrimental activity happened in our water system?
So if we had a situation where we had to make a fix, quick fix, we would look at reallocating funds from a capital project that could be delayed to a capital project that's available for us. But that's a little bit like kicking the can down the road, and we definitely would have to get back to that capital project that we would have to look at and implement.
And capital projects would have to stay in the same enterprise fund?
Correct. Yeah.
Which is based off of TAP fees, right? That's the only way you're getting capital investment money. And growth, it's through TAP fees.
Well, if it was, if it was a growth-related project, we would certainly look to use TAP fees as the funding source. If it was a reinvestment, we would look at user, you know, water fees.
Okay.
Water rates.
Okay. So the question is, is okay, so we raise it 4% this year. How about if the next two to three years, Denver doesn't water, doesn't, doesn't increase? You're collecting more money, 2% upwards, of more money than what we were kind of in the growth pattern, the trajectory of what Denver Water did. So, you know, we're increasing it because we want some capital projects. So are you asking the council tonight, in the last few weeks, which is a little late in the planning process, that we need to increase our fees to support ongoing capital projects from here on out within that enterprise fund?
We're asking the council for a 4% increase. That would help us to take on capital projects for reinvestment as well as growth, which would be through the TAP fees. Yes, we're asking you to do that tonight. You know, honestly, our, our rate increases have averaged around 3.7% over the last few years. We didn't see 4% as a, as a major ask, especially for the fact that we were looking at applying it to reinvestment of our assets.
Okay. I just, I maybe wasn't anticipating that the ask was for a half-million dollars in rate increases for capital projects that I don't think we've all seen just the whole list yet.
No. And honestly, Councilmember Fire, that, I'm sorry, Councilmember Pfeiffer, excuse me. That is, that, that, that's something that's on us. We, we have been going through the capital master plan, finding out how we need to apply it to our long-term capital plan, and then how we would apply that to our entire capital program, 10-year capital program. And that's something we're still in the process of going through. And we plan to show it to you, I think, at a workshop in December?
December. I think, I just think it feels a little backwards.
It's absolutely backwards.
Because if the 10-year plan has always said we're okay and we're not okay, then we should have had more heads up than tonight.
Correct. Correct.
And that's, I think, where I'm struggling.
Yeah. And the other thing that I would like to mention to you and to the rest of the council, we have new leadership in some, in several very critical areas. And that new leadership is looking at these assets with a fresh set of eyes, which we are encouraging, frankly. We're encouraging our team to do that. And they're bringing some things to our attention that probably would have been brought to our attention anyway, but they're bringing, they're, they're doing that with a fresh set of eyes and looking and asking a new set of questions to the people that we work with. So it's a little backwards right now, and we certainly own that, and we apologize for that. But that's the essence of why we are recommending this 4% increase is to create the resources to deal with these capital projects as we move forward.
Okay. And I get it. I just think more runway time on the subject would have been nice before taking off in tonight. I mean, I think that's where I'm struggling a little bit is, I don't want to just raise rates just because we, I want to know that we have a true list of needs, not wants.
Right.
And I haven't seen that, but yeah, we're going to be asked to vote on it. So I'm a little, little backwards on it. And I mean, we can work through it, but in the future, I would ask that there's more time on the subject before coming to us, before a discussion like this. So that's just my feedback.
And, okay. Well, thank you. That's very, absolutely legitimate feedback. Lauren, I'm sorry.
Sorry. One last thing. Just want to close, as I saw her, I want, I'd like to hear for her to kind of explain or her thoughts on what would be, if the rate doesn't increase in the next two years, I mean, yes, you get the half-million dollars, and so you can get to those projects, I get that. But how about if, how about if Denver does do a jump in, in the rates next year that may exceed this $400,000 or something? Are we anticipating, and I guess look to the whole team here, are we anticipating that we track trend that with their increase? Or do we start leveling it off? When they increase, we don't increase to kind of level, level-set that? Or do we anticipate to be parallel from here on out? Because there is a compounding dollar amount involved in this conversation.
So I could speak to the sort of methodology that we, I could speak to the methodology that we, that we use when we're, when we're rate-setting. We look at a 10-year model, just like the rest of the CIP models, and we, we have a rate model we've used since about 2001. So it's been very steady for us. It's gotten us to a really good place. The current proposed rate model has a 4% rate increase this year. And as you pointed out, that does then kind of accumulate over the years, right? Future years are set at 3% as an estimate. But every year, we go back and we reevaluate where our needs are. We work through the budget process, and we do come up with a specific rate recommendation. So as Mark mentioned, the 3.7% average over 10 years has sometimes been 1.5, and sometimes it's been 5. So, so over the course of time, it sort of starts to level out. The other thing I want to mention is that last year, our operating budget went up 5.3% with the Denver Water increase that we incurred. But we made the decision to only raise it 4.3% last year, in part because we knew that over time, it starts to smooth out. So we do think that the 4%, 4% is prudent, understanding that the master plan results are kind of coming in at the same time as the budget. And we always work with the best information that we have at the time. So I want to assure you, that was very thoughtful to prepare for a Denver Water increase. We didn't only model a 4% in the rate model. We also modeled a 3, and we modeled a 5, and thought about, well, what, what felt right in terms of hitting a spot that was conceptually smoothing with the rest of the history and the past that we've set rates at? And I think we made the right decision last year. I think this would be the right decision this year.
Yeah, I think just as long as we keep that philosophy in mind about, you know, averaging it over time versus spiking and dropping. I appreciated the 3% year-over-year. It just raises a little alarms when we go a little bit higher than what we've done because we've had good years and bad years with Denver Water. And then understanding everything else that you show here, to me, is it just a little, little surprising? And just maybe some more heads up down the road. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Lauren Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor. So just looking at this long-term to kind of build upon my colleagues, I'm going, one of the things that I'm concerned about is, what's the cost to the taxpayers if we don't make this investment now, but say we delay it? What's the, is there going to be a compounding cost? Is this project going to get more expensive over time?
Yes, there's a couple, a couple of ways that it would get more expensive over time. One is just cost escalation associated with, with projects, engineering, construction costs. We do project that to increase over time. The other is, is what happens if, if we, if we make a decision to keep rates low for a period of time, and then we kind of, the bill comes due, and then you're stuck with a much larger rate increase? And we've modeled that, too, as part of the exercise for proposing this rate today. We did model, what would happen if we just had a 0% rate increase for the next five years? Well, you don't want to see the results. But what happens is, what happens is you start to, sort of being forced into much higher rate increases to catch up. And I think that's where the philosophy of smoothing that we've done here, and by incrementally increasing a small amount every year in Arvada, has served us really well.
And not just looking at the economic impacts, but the health impacts? Do any of these projects have potential ramifications on the public health?
So everything we do around water is public health-related. So absolutely. One of the things that I want to emphasize is that, first of all, fluoride is probably one of them that has a direct public health impact, although more in the chronic nature than it would be in acute risk. Somebody mentioned the, I think it was Mark mentioned, the floods of 2013. That's the kind of stress on the system that we would be able to be more proactive in preparing for if we're able to move forward with these projects more quickly. So it's, in my opinion, it's not the sort of day-to-day, but it's what's going to happen if there, if the system is stressed. We have gone beyond the benchmark recommended replacement on some of our filters. And so that's why we want to move forward with it. I don't think there's an immediate health risk today. I think our water's safe. I drink it. I've been drinking it for 15 years here in Arvada, and my kids and dogs drink it. It's very safe, but we want to keep that philosophy of being resilient. Let me also tell you, in the context of the headlines on the wildfires, we've been watching that really closely because our colleagues who run water treatment plants up in Loveland, for example, who are, Loveland's in that evacuation area by the dam store. And, and so we've, we've actually just been even communicating, as recently as today, is, well, how do we prepare ourselves best in case we get a fire in our watershed? As you can imagine, that kind of thing can be really devastating to a raw water supply. So we're always thinking about the public health risk, always thinking about that. And I personally worked for the State Health Department for 10 years, working with the water supply system. So your, your point is, is close to my heart when it comes to, why are we doing this? It's about public health.
Thank you. And then just in the, going back to the, the short-term view, with the economic crisis that we're under right now, a lot of cities are not making the investments or are delaying because they've been hit. And we here in Arvada are very lucky. I know, I know Mr. Archer watches it very, very closely all the time. But is there possibility for savings if we do these projects now because we're not in competition with as many other cities looking to make these same investments right now?
We talked about that possibility even before the COVID crisis impacted us back in January, when we were talking about, well, what happens if we are in a recession? And part of the recession planning was thinking about moving forward with capital projects and trying to realize some cost savings when things are less expensive to build. Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
And Ms. Ford.
So I just wanted to thank you, Sharon, because I had the pleasure of working with you and your teammates during the Sonoran Institute. What, what do we call that? Not a conference, but a symposium or, you know? And I really, I heard your philosophy, and I agree with it entirely. In fact, I, I look at it maybe a little differently. I don't know. I'm a little prejudiced because my husband also works in water. But I actually think we're doing our constituents a service by continuing to increase the water costs because that's the reality of our water. It continually goes up for us. It doesn't go down. We, we have huge investment in these water. We have huge investment in these water treatment facilities and distribution systems. And, you know, when I think of an increase of $22.44 per year, to me, I look at our average income here in Nevada. And while I know that there are those that do suffer, overall, we most do not here in Nevada. And I think about that $1.87 that someone wouldn't think twice to go out and buy a plastic bottle full of water. You know, it is so little for the fact that this is life-sustaining water. We cannot live without water. We can live without transportation, we can walk if we had to. But we can't live without water. And so I really wanted to thank you because I've heard your strategies. I believe that you're going in the right direction. You know, I think that we're very smart here in Nevada to not dramatically increase our rates. But I think our rates are realistic for what we're seeing in the marketplace overall in terms of everything increasing. And I think it really shows the true cost of what it takes to provide water to 120,000 people. So I really think that you're going in the right direction, so I applaud you for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. And let me wrap this portion of this discussion up. I think that, you know, I've got to applaud this city team for, they could have just taken a position of, well, Denver didn't raise their rates and therefore we're not going to, you know, look further than that and just take frankly, the easy way out. Instead, we had significant work that's been done on this water plan. I understand exactly where you're coming from, Mr. Pfeiffer, that some of this is coming to us, you know, very late in the game. But rather than simply, you know, sitting on our hands, I think it took some courage of the city team to say, yes, we're not going to have that increase. But because of this information that we're getting from the water plan, these are things that we need to be doing, need to be taken care of. And let's do it with the funds that would have gone towards that increase. I totally agree with Ms. Ford that the approach we've taken. And frankly, I've been sitting through these things for 20 years of annual discussion of water and sewer rates. And it has served us doggone well to do it the way we have. You look at some of our neighboring communities and some who have been accused of simply stockpiling money without projects. We don't want to go that route. And we don't want to go the route of, guess what? We're going to have a very, very large rate increase. I think the way we've approached it has been very appropriate and so I'm comfortable with this. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for bringing some of those points up. Could I ask the council and the team that, you know, obviously when we get the readout, that we have some view into those projects and prioritization of those projects and understanding before you just go and do that? I just think it's only fair for us if we're going to do that, that we have some, just view into those projects at least.
Mr. Devon is very assertive in his agreement to do that. Smart man. Okay, Ms. Israel, you may continue on with your.
Thank you, next slide, Bruce, please. So I appreciate again the discussion on this. I am a geek when it comes to water policy, no doubt about it. So let me geek out with you a little bit more. One thing that we're doing differently in 2021 is we will have paid off our last round of debt on the water fund. So that means our overall expenses are going down by $450,000. That was as planned. Again, between 2009 and 2019, the water rate increases have averaged at 3.7%. Something that I feel like it's relevant to discuss in the context of some of the conversations and questions this evening is about our bi-monthly service charge. This is the service charge that's fixed. We charge it every bill and it's been increased three times since 1987. And what's interesting is that this is a service charge that only comprises about 7% of our total revenue. And compared to benchmarks with some other cities, they're shooting for 20 or 30% of fixed total revenue. And I think that that's going to be an important thing for us to discuss at our workshop and going forward is philosophically, where do we want to be? In the context of the reserve conversation, it's relevant there too. Because if only 7% of our overall revenues are fixed with those service fees, then the rest of it fluctuates based on demand and weather patterns and drought. It also fluctuates based on how many taps we're going to sell every year. So I don't believe that the bi-monthly service charge has been a big focus of discussion in past years. But I think it would be good for us to, you know, be thinking about that in the year ahead. Again, no recommendation for an increase this year. Let's see, with the 4% increase and then that projected 3% in subsequent years I mentioned to you earlier, that allows us to track our revenues with expenses. This chart only shows the operating expenses. So that gap between revenue and expenses shown here is what we allocate to the reinvestment portion of our capital projects right now. Any questions about that? Okay, next slide, please. This is, on the left, another comparison slide of where we sit compared to neighboring cities. So again, this is our 2020, proposed 2021 rates compared to the 2020 rates for our neighboring cities. This is only the water charges. So the last chart that you saw that was of this bar chart style was for the complete utility cost, that was water, sewer, stormwater. So this is just the water rates we're talking about. So again, the increase annually proposed with the 4% level is about $15 a year. And then the projected balance for the water fund, you can see that we have a significant balance right now, but that will be drawn down as gross reservoir project moves forward. And we draw down those funds to pay for our 1/6 portion of the construction costs. So we'll be talking again more about this as we dig into the master plan findings in December. So any comments or questions on this?
You know, I'd like at some point to get an update. Jim Sullivan did this at one point, an analysis of how much, we got a really good settlement when we were in negotiations with Denver Water as part of this gross reservoir project. And the dollar figure is dramatic in terms of what we're going to save over what other community, where other communities are in terms of where we are with Denver Water right now. You seem to be understanding what I'm talking about, so could we get that report at some point?
I'd be happy to give you that report. In a nutshell, we were able to lock in what amounts to the tap fees at the time of our agreement. So as Denver Water's tap fees have gone up for partnerships like this, we were able to lock it many years ago. So we'll be paying a deeply discounted rate to buy into their system. I can get an updated figure for you.
That would be great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Next slide, please. This is an overview of our, some of the highlights of our CIP projects. You can see here that we've got about $224 million budgeted between now and 2029. Some of the current projects include a couple of items you voted on earlier this evening. That's the raw water pump station and Zone 5 pump station, we're doing that work now. We're starting to, we're finalizing negotiations for a 1.5 million gallon storage tank on Highway 93 that's going to provide service to the northwest part of the city. We're working on our fluoride replacement. There's that clarifier I told you about, a big steel tank that needs structural work. We need to do some work on our residuals or sledge handling, rebuilding filters, rebuilding our chemical system. So those are all things that we want to start to put in motion here in the next year. Because by the time we get to 2025, we want to be moving forward towards some of the bigger capital construction that was identified in the master plan. So this is just a snapshot of where we are now and what our immediate priorities are. You'll see I have an asterisk next to some projects that are partially funded. One of those is a water line that will loop around to serve the Castle Gate community with higher levels of fire flow. So that's not fully funded this year, but we are going to start the design work and be fine tuning that in the next year.
Mr. Jones has a question.
Yes.
The Highway 93 Lakes Project, is that the Pioneer gravel pit?
It's adjacent to there, yes. So it's, yes, it's the contemplated pond that we would have to excavate. So it's not just a gravel pit, we would actually have to remove some material, but it is right.
But it's at that general location?
That general location.
Okay. And is the, I'm assuming then, then the lease with Pioneer gravel is up by that point and we're free to?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Nope.
Okay. And we'll be rolling up our sleeves and digging into these findings in December. Next slide, please. So we've been talking primarily about water rates. There is also a recommendation for a 3% increase for wastewater rates. This comprises a small amount to set aside for the job progression model funding, similar to what we did for water. So that's when our wastewater certified operators pass an exam, we can promote them. We do have a CIP contribution here for the North Trunk Line. So the North Trunk Line serves the, all the new development in the northwest part of the city. It also serves my neighborhood of Lake Arbor. And then it goes heads south and east from there and connects with the metro wastewater system. And so there are some known bottlenecks in that line that we'll be addressing here as part of our capital project list. What we wanted to do is take some of our rates this year and contribute them to the North Trunk Line. Because as we expand capacity, we're also replacing with new. There is $170,000 for additional city support services. That includes new garage doors for our wastewater shops facility and then just overall vendor price increases. So that amounts to a 3% recommendation. We will continue to fund the CIPP lining. I did get a question from council last week about how much we've spent on that. It's about $15 million over the last 10 years, averaging 1.5 to 1.6 million we've been reinvesting. Once that work is done and it should be completed by 2023, then you can see in the graph that our expenses go down. And that is specifically related to having completed that CIPP reinvestment. We are projecting to have several large capital projects come in over the next 10 years. And that's why you can see that gap between expenses and revenues remaining sort of projected outward. That gap would be contributions from operating to capital reinvestment projects. So any questions about that?
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yeah, so you mentioned the lining project. What's the cost difference between doing a full replacement versus the lining? I don't recall what that savings is, because I believe it is a lot cheaper.
It's a lot cheaper, it's in the millions of dollars, but I hesitate to give you an exact amount. I can describe for you though, that it is lining a pipe with this, you know, this new structurally sound cast-in-place material. And if we weren't doing that, we would be doing a full surface excavation. So that's a lot of the reason why it's cheaper, because we can just go in through the manholes.
I'd like to know the cost difference.
I'd be happy to look.
Per foot or something like that.
Yeah, we'll get that for you, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, next slide. Okay, so this is another comparative slide. You can see that Nevada is right in the middle of our neighbors, although it's not a very steep drop from the least to most, to middle of the road there. Our proposed increase of 3% is an increase of $7.20 annually for a typical single-family home. I want to point out too, that the majority of our expenses are related to the cost associated with treatment at metro wastewater. So a lot of the money that we receive, we pass on to them. And then you can see there on the right is the fund balance. And after 2023, when we complete that cast-in-place lining project, then we will start to raise our fund balance up over the next few years. And that'll put us in a good position for the master plan project implementation that will be coming out of our next master plan work for the wastewater side. So you may recall that in the strategic plan that's currently adopted, our strategic results include wastewater sewer and stormwater master plans. That wastewater master plan's in progress right now and we'll be getting information about that, those recommendations by the end of next year. Next slide? Okay, so here's our summary, same as the first slide. You can see that this is the recommendation. At the proposed increases of 4 and 3% for water and wastewater, we are still a very good value for our citizens for the level of quality and service that we provide. We run really lean. And it would, if you saw fit to approve the 4%, it would put us in a better position to fund some of the reinvestment needs we have.
Okay.
Thanks for the opportunity.
See no other questions, thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Very good job.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And council?
It's time for a break.
We need to take a break. Our computer, our IT group pushed out an update to all of our computers, including this one. And we need to actually take a break so that we could restart our computers of about, I think it's about a five-minute break.
Fair enough, we'll take a short recess. Fair enough, we'll take a short recess.
Thank you.
rebooting computers. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 20-26, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 74-31, land use fees of Article 2, Community Development Department Service Fees of Chapter 74, Planning and Development of the Arvada City Code. And at the same time, we will be considering R20094, Resolution Adopting and the amended fee schedule for land use pursuant to Chapter 74, planning and development of the Arvada City Code. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So the repeal of the ordinance will essentially enable you to consider the resolution that you just listed. The repeal of the ordinance would allow us to adopt land use fees by resolution. It streams line, it streamlines the process. And after consideration of the, the need to be able to be more nimble with our establishment of fees for land use applications, we worked with the city attorney's office to propose this to you, and we're recommending approval of the resolution.
Okay, is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this item? We have nobody signed up, nobody in council chambers that wishes to speak to this. I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for city council questions or action. Mr. Pfeifer, you're first.
Not any questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Mr. Marriott, do you have a question?
I actually do have a question before Mr. Pfeifer proceeds. The question I have is, is have we looked at these proposed new fees and either benchmarked them against other similarly cited and sized cities? Or looked at the, oh, the, the money that these fees would generate versus the costs that they would offset? And, and made sure we're in good shape on both those two counts?
Yes, we have. We've, we've looked at our surrounding jurisdictions and, and Councilmember Marriott, I believe you're talking about the fees that are actually in the next resolution.
Correct.
Right. So, yeah, we've looked at the fees based on our surrounding jurisdictions. We're, we're not quite 100% offset, but we're, we're getting close. I think we're in the, somewhere around the 80% or so area. And the idea is that, you know, we would continue to look at how we compare with jurisdictions and continue to raise that to be, so that we are competitive over time.
Okay, thank you. I, I just want to make sure that, and, and I had a feeling that that was the case, that we were doing that, both looking at the surrounding jurisdictions, but also looking at what the fees are paying for and what our actual costs of those are. Only just because, you know, every time we raise these fees, it makes development more expensive.
Correct.
And, you know, we, we talk lots about affordable housing and housing affordability within this community. And I think it's just important that we don't take actions that are not necessary, that, that raise the cost of housing and make that problem worse. But if these fees are, are, are paying for actual costs that we have, then it's highly appropriate for us to do so. And so, so I'm, I'm fine with that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pfeifer.
Now I move that Council Bill 20-026, an ordinance to repeal and reenact Section 74-31, land use fees of Article 2, Community Development Department Service Fees of Chapter 74, planning and development of the Arvada City Code be approved on final reading number 4743 and ordered published by title only.
Motion for repeal has been made, all votes are cast. That passes seven to zero, you may go forward with the next one.
I move that council bill, or excuse me, I move that Resolution 20-094, Resolution Adopting and Amending Fee Schedule for Land Use Pursuant to Chapter 74, Planning and Development of the Arvada City Code be adopted.
Motion's for approval, all votes are cast. That likewise passes seven to zero. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 20027, an ordinance certifying the City of Arvada Mill Levy for 2020 for the Board of County Commissioners for Jefferson and Adams Counties. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the certification of the city's mill level, mill, I'm sorry, mill levy for the valuation year 2020. This, the proposed budget estimates that we'll collect somewhere around 7.272 million in, based on the mill levy of 4.31 mills. This mill levy has not been increased since 1993. It remains the, it's remained the same for nearly 30 years, and we're recommending approval of the ordinance.
Ms. Simpson? I'm, I'm sorry, is there any member of the public that wishes to address this on this matter? With that, I will close the public comment portion, Ms. Simpson?
If no one has any questions, I'll make the motion.
I have no questions listed.
Okay. I move that CB 20-027, an ordinance certifying the City of Arvada Mill Levy for 2020 for the Board of County Commissioners for Jefferson and Adams Counties be approved on final reading numbered 4744 and ordered published by title only.
Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to make a quick comment here, and that's to, to highlight that the City of Arvada collects, you know, 4.31 mills. Your property tax bill, depending on where you live, is somewhere between 100 and 200 mills. And so when it comes to property tax, the City of Arvada really realizes very, very little of any property tax that you pay. And that most of that goes other places.
Mr. Jones, if I can get your vote, thank you. All votes are cast, that passes seven to zero, thank you. And now I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 20-028, an ordinance appropriating funds for the fiscal year 2021. At the same time, we'll consider Resolution 20095, a resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year 2021. Also, Count, Resolution 20096, a resolution adopting the 2021 Capital Improvement Fund Budget and allocating for specific projects in 2021. And also 20-097, a resolution adopting the Pay Plan for Fiscal Year 2021. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So before you is the culmination of probably about four months' work, about, I think, five workshops, starting with a presentation on our preliminary 10-year financial plans back in July, review of our capital improvement plans, and then a presentation on September 28th and October 12th of our proposed work system budgets. A lot of work by our leadership team in, in developing a plan that keeps people first as a priority and, and also manages to, with, with some, with some reductions, present to you a balanced 10-year budget. A lot of this is due to the fact that we have a very resilient local economy, and a lot of it is due to the fact that we did a lot of hard work with your guidance and, and input in the workshops that we presented to you over the last few months. So tonight, we are recommending approval of the ordinance that will give us the authority to, that will appropriate the money and give us the authority to expend on behalf of the City of our, City of Arvada, our community and our residents, the appropriation amount of $247,918, $870, and we're recommending approval of the ordinance.
Very good. Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this item? Again, seeing none and no one on Zoom, I'll close the public comment portion, Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, I'll start off with a motion and, and then I'd like to make a comment. So I move the Council Bill 20-028, an ordinance appropriating funds for fiscal year 2021 be approved on final reading numbered 4745 and ordered published by title only. So I want to make just a couple of comments. First off, off, I want to thank Mr. Devon and his entire team, department heads, and everyone who contributed and worked on this budget. I think in uncertain times like these, this type of budget action is, 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 is very good and, and very well done. I'd like to note that this budget does a couple of things. One, it protects people, it keeps people first, that no one is losing their job because of this, this budget. It doesn't mean that it's easy, though, because certainly city team members are giving up, giving up or not being given raises this year. However, for the public, for the people, I think this budget does a couple of very extraordinary things, given the time we're in. One is that it maintains our commitment to maintaining our biggest asset, which is our streets. So we have not balanced the budget by taking away our, our ongoing maintenance and repair of our streets. And I think that's something that people can feel every single day. Secondly, I think the other thing that I believe this budget does a very good job of is maintains the city's capital expenditures. So spending on things that are important to the quality of life of all of us. So these are, you know, bike paths and, and all kinds of capital expenditures, traffic signal replacement, things like that. And again, this budget wasn't balanced by taking from things that are our core responsibility. I think this budget's very good because we continue to meet all of our core responsibility obligations as well as protect our team. And so I just want to say thank you to, to all of you who worked on this. I know it was not just Mr. Devon, it was the entire team. And, and, and I believe the citizens of Arvada are getting great work from, from our city team for this. And so again, thank you.
Motion's for approval? All votes are cast. That is approved seven to zero, thank you.
Okay, and I'll move that R20-095, a resolution adopting the budget for fiscal 20, for fiscal year 2021 be approved.
Motion's for approval, just a second here, there we go. Mr. Marriott, if you would vote again.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I may have. I wish I had the ability to block people's votes, but I don't. Seven to zero, that passes.
Or maybe vote for us, right? Okay, next I'll move that R20-096, a resolution adopting the 2021 Capital Improvement Fund Budget and allocating for specific projects in 2021 be approved.
Motion's for approval, all votes are cast, that passes seven to zero.
Okay, hang on. So I'll move that Resolution R20-097, a resolution adopting the Pay Plan for Fiscal Year 2021 be approved.
Motion's for approval, all votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Let me comment, as this is a long process, and it's not atypical for us to, at the final hearing, to be able to vote in rather rapid-fire response to these motions. It's not because it's, it's perfunctory, it's because a lot of time and energy has gone into this by the city team, by the city manager, and frankly, by the entire city council, asking a lot of questions during workshops and other discussions that we have on these before we get to this final vote tonight. So the citizens should be assured that there's been a lot of eyes that have looked at this, a lot of questions that have been asked. And, and frankly, the fact that we don't have a lot of public at this, and it's not just because of COVID-19 this year. Typically, we do not have a lot of public input at our final vote on the budget process because we have been transparent, because we have gotten information out, and because good questions have been asked by some excellent city council members who are here, who really are watching, watching these things on behalf of the citizens. So with that, we are complete in our public hearings for tonight. We have no one that wishes to speak for public comment unless we have somebody signed up by Zoom, we do not. And with that, I'll turn it over to city council for any comments they would like to make. Mr. Pfeifer, you're first.
Yeah, I thought tonight I might vote no on the budget, just because late council member Don Allard popped into my head. Because I felt that I should have had a line item budget delivered to me prior to all this. But I was channeling him and probably Bob Dyer a little bit tonight, so thank you. Sharon, if she's still listening, sorry for all the questions, too, on the other thing. But I felt it was probably not a good joke to do during a serious vote, because you're right. They did, the team has done a great job getting where we are, and I'm very proud of the work you guys do. But yes, Don Allard was in my head during that time.
God rest his soul. John Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to report this week that, or last week, that the Arvada Economic Development Association received their accreditation, or re-accreditation. It's a, it's a fairly rare thing for an economic development association to be accredited, and ours is. And so we should really be proud of that. It shows the great work that they are doing, both their team as well as their board, and, in, in helping our economic development around here. So I just want to say thank you to those guys for going out of their way to get that done, and, and congratulations to them for passing that as well.
Mr. Pfeifer.
Did have one more thing. I, from a personal note, as well as my day job at CDOT, I just want to extend my thanks to the Arvada Police Department for contributing and participating in the wildfire issue up in northern Boulder County and Laramo County. That is a horrible situation that's going on. I get briefing three times a day about it, and I appreciate that we are working with our neighbors up north. And then that also is extended to the Arvada Fire Protection District, who is also contributing to trying to control those fires. And it, I can tell you, over the weekend, on Saturday, I could see the flames from my house on the mountain. So when you think we're 26 to 30 miles away from where that's happening, and I can see the flames with my naked eye, you know how bad it is that far away. So my heart and thoughts go for all those impacted, but also for all of our first responders.
for all of our first responders participating in that, because it does mean a lot. There's over 1,000, you know, firefighters up there, 1,100, and several police departments across the front range, helping out with paramedics. So I I want to extend my thanks to those that are contributing to that.
Ms. Ford.
Well, I just wanted to encourage our residents that the, though the Arvada Center is is not producing its normal season of plays, they are doing their best to continue creating digital media and shows that will continue to entertain people. And, you know, I'd like to just give a shout out to all the artists and musicians who have lost their jobs, and to help, just encourage, encourage them. They need our encouragement, because they're they're really suffering, and they provide a lot of entertainment for us during normal years. So.
Thank you for that. And they did a great series of, what do they call them, back porch performances? This, they're coming up with creative ways to keep the arts alive, and that's absolutely wonderful. I just wanted to take a moment. There was a horrible incident in Commerce City a couple days ago, in which a two innocent people were killed in an automobile accident, one of which was a young detective with the Commerce City Police Department. I noticed our officers are wearing ribbons on their on their badges right now, in respect of that. And to see the picture of that young detective withholding his three-year-old daughter was just so impactful. So in these turbulent times, please remember that, you know, every life is precious, and these officers who are out doing their job, have families, too, have loved ones, and let's just keep everyone's lives in our thoughts and our prayers as we see these losses and recognize that it's, life is so, so very precious for every life. So with that, Mr. Devon.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a reminder, next Monday is a workshop. We'll get an update on communications engagement strategy, and also an update on the city housing strategy. So we look forward to providing that information to you next Monday.
Thank you. Ms. Morris.
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
Very good. We stand adjourned.